Mal muli tasils el mer gumi roguhi. Vice Presidente Mariur, ma floor leader Aldabel, el mer gumi roguhi. Marang asuliun mosapiul mer el alnya momo ngongeval sils, reti al togubet sal sesion ergid, ma mukmogedongi el mora order. Clergam warolgol.
Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oy.
Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo.
Oy.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Oy.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oy.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
Oy.
Senator Mark Uerbelau Rudim.
Oy.
Senator Mi Sangavau.
Oy.
Senator Kazuki El Tops Sungino.
Oy.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oy.
Senator Mason Ngire Abangal Whipps.
Oy.
Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
Oy.
Vice President Kry Mariur.
Oy.
President Hokons Paulis.
Oy.
Mister President Tangania Kurum.
Maria Kurum, ma banguntina floor leader gid, senator Aldabel, bo longtigaygirgid raureled. Senator Aldabel.
Mister President, mal muli tasils mer gao ma vice president ma bekel ta'akal senators. Kadamo mokmu raureled, ma kadaa. Ngara item 4, tiaga ngara adaption ina journal. Ma demora item 5, the need to take note aigal communication ina officer president emengani sel Prescom 11-26 ti'at transmital aigal gi'ral aigal tool executive order blel Saina President, aigal organization ma baby opposition blle establish a officer president ma Minister Justice. And direkam the take note a Prescom 11-27 ti'anga huk appointment ra Ms. Jacqui Alexander el mora aboard the PPUC. Ti'aganiya Prescom 11-28 transmital ra letter ra aigal international commercial arbitration. Direkal denaut ra Prescom 11-29 ti'anga huk nomination ra Mister Terrence Rulugd, el mo'odala aboard ra Palau Social Security Board. Direkal denaut ra Prescom 11-23 ti'anga fiscal year 2021 debt service payment. Direkaniya Prescom 11-21 denaut ringin ti'anga huk appointment tra Satoru Adachi, el mo'odala aboard Palau Social Security Administration. Direkal denaut ra Prescom 11-22 ti'anga transmital letter aigal bill, el mo'amend ra title 4, a PNC by request. Ti'ha bill by request el nar a Chief Justice. Aigal gid aigal el nar a Officer President el communication el may. Denaut aigal, demora item 6. Denaut sel imol communication el nar a department heads. Department Communication 11-22 ti'anga informing the presence of task force of Coa Moana 21 advance team, ti'asel huk timra soldal. Amir Belau, mo'adamo take note ring. Ya weh de broa. Sel item 7, the President don't tira short wishes.
Short wishes. Mukdongia sesion ergid el mora order. Floor leader.
President, kadama mal muli raureled, ma kadangar sel item 7 sel bills, resolution, and other matters el na House of Delegates. Ma denaut ra HOD Com 11-6 ti'anga information aigal adoption ra sel Senate Joint Resolution 11-1 ST1, House Amnusipin Muu SS. Direkal denaut ra HOD Communication 11-7 ti'anga transmital House Joint Resolution 11-5-1S. Ti'anga mo'adarais Republic of Palau, among mo'drura President of the Republic, el mo'varo, although the amount ringi 100 million in a ison development pang, el moktegaringi amo fund the operation in renewable energy acquisition.
Top privilege. Floor leader. Top privilege, Senator.
Oy, suna President, understanding alaga kwa seka demu ba unless a floor leader amne decide el. The understanding aigal ari sesa kwa seka demu el mora durud reading e mosapiul clear sel.
Oy. Alabadamu sel communication el.
Okay, President, segida dimlesa akte ringi komi.
Okay, floor leader, mal mulme.
Mal mulme, Mister President, kadangar sel nextel communication a House of Delegates el may. Ma denaut segida el House of Delegates Communication 11-8 ti'anga returner sel Senate Bill 11-18 ST2, no bangela ST2 ti'anga FY21 budget, el nar anya amendment ra House. Denaut ringim sel deba appropriate el partakalender ete discussion. Direkal denaut ra House of Delegate Communication 11-9 ti'anga transmital a House Joint Resolution 11-4 1S el mora consideration and action ra Senate. Et ti'anga understanding ngara print real time, ndi denaut ringim sel lemmer madra demorobos ete discussion. Ya mal mulme, Mister President, el mora mul mora order of the day ti'aga ngara unfinished business, demora bill calendar. Ma auera da entertain aigal ngara first reading, and Mister President mek suspend a order a ti'al calendar gid, abos ete el mu'bil mor sel durud reading, ya ba take action sel budget bill el ngara durud reading.
Segida motionu namdu ngese, ngutirge roguil gongel du oy. Om tok, namngai, floor leader.
Alaisi, Mister President. Ek move, ngaringi sel bill, segida bill el nar a House el may el nar anya chenses ra House, ma ek move ma da pas ra durud reading Senate Bill 11-18 ST2, HT2.
Segida motionu namdu ngese. E segana. Kadamu shenkyo. Clergam iwe taitol.
Senate Bill number 11-18 ST2 HT2. A bill for an act to enact a budget law for fiscal year 2021 through the authorization and appropriation of the sum of 1,001,640,398 dollars from the National Treasury for the annual general operations, special revenue, and debt service budget of the Republic of Palau for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2021, to amend section 3, part 3H of RPPN number 10-56 as amended by RPL 11-1, and to amend 23 PNC subsection 1201C and section 410 of RPL number 10-29 as amended by RPL number 10-34 and for related purposes. Ti'alu dasul molla, amatmo krayo sangangala 2021, logi wa authorization ma appropriation 101,640,398 dollars in ngara National Treasury el mora annual general operations, special revenue, ma debt service budget ra blur belau, el momegim dra September 30, 2021. Ti'adirek al momolo ra section 3, part 3H ra RPL number 10-56 el nyi yaminwa ra RPL 11-1, el mo'amend ra 23 PNC subsection 1201C ma section 410, RPL number 10-29, amne amended by RPL number 10-34 ma kukbe birangod al belgul. Ti'alu dasul molla, alul dersi, a'tangaqal President ra blur belau nasulangal S. Whipps Jr.
Auera, apadushenkyo me gun tira short wishes. Per gid el mora order. Floor leader.
Oy, President, ti'aga motionu ngara la la pasa sel Senate Bill 11-18 ST2 HT2 ra durud reading. Aigal sel el nar a auri sesa, ya kolam la anya discussion aigal chenses blle make a House of Delegates. Anya concern a chairman, don't tira chairman, mal koradi muktaklisa aigal concern, abos ete el entertain ti'al.
Okay, Inabo, di por aigal mlamba da du. Senator Inabo.
Suna ni, Mister President, aigal amendment ra House da di mlora aigal mlaringi sel ontila administrative mail gi'ral da lela ge'adu yela balsed, ma tol'tu mlotmu aigal. Ma aigal bebir a tlan tngila budget el dim ge'arey anding ngu'ila dalut el mo'adatu'ul gi'ral. Ma du'ltu'ir aigal discussion ergid, e bo da sebe ete reject ter ti'al HT2, e dalut el mo'adatu'ukid ma adra House eda dra aigal differences ergid el mo'aktir. Malbol sebe ete ngut ti'al budget. Suna ni, Mister President.
Kadamu shenkyo, floor leader, reject ter ti'ang. I say, okay. Kadamu shenkyo, Senator Mariur. Clergam warolgol.
Senator Regis Agitaya.
No.
Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo.
No.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Yes, emosu wets.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
No.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
No.
Senator Mark Uerbelau Rudim.
No.
Senator Mi Sangavau.
No.
Senator Kazuki El Tops Sungino. Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
No.
Senator Mason Ngire Abangal Whipps. Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
No.
Vice President Kry Mariur.
No.
President Hokons Paulis. President Hokons Paulis.
No.
Mister President, 2 yes, 11 no.
Shenkyo mor ti'al Senate Bill. 11 no, et 2 yes, kadama blar reject ter ti'al bill. El alblad reject ringi akmo point ra Kanfree, ma akmo point ra Chairman Inabo, ma mokchermen ra Kanfree. E anya dingin mo'siga tri ra aradal e mora Kanfree. Short wishes. Mutel mukdongia sesion ergid el mora order. Floor leader.
Oy, President, kadama mutel mal muli raureled. Auera de bo ari sesa kadama el nar a durud reading, bill calendar durud reading. Kadama les suspend a aruls ergid e mosabe ete el mora durud reading nar anysel oru del durud readel action ergid ra durud reading. Kadama el disposer say, since you kadada dirkan durud reading ma da continue, finish sel nextel bill el ngara durud reading. Ma ek move el pas ra durud reading a House Bill 11-1-1, HT2 ST1.
Segida motionu namdu ngese, ma gun tira clergam, male iwe taitol. Clergam.
House Bill number 11-1-1, HT2 ST1. A bill for an act to amend chapters 1, 2, 4, and 7 of Title 15 of the Palau National Code, the Palau National Telecommunications Act of 2017 to allow PNC to subtract from its universal access levy an amount equal to its RUS loan payments and extend the moratorium on the establishment of new telecommunications service companies until January 1, 2025 and for other related purposes. Ti'alu dasul molla, amolod ra chapters 1, 2, 4, ma 7 ra Palau National Code, the Palau National Telecommunications Act of 2017. El mo'ongera PNC, mokosura udo ra universal access levy, el osisiu a di'sel nyi mesel udo du lo'vangal mangga dra RUS loan. E ko'matiya time, el dak'a omakto be'ela be'es r telecommunication service companies, el mo'January 1, 2025 ma kukbe birangod al belgul. Ti'alu dasul molla, alul dersi, a'tangaqal Speaker Savaino Anastasio Maro Guil Adal, a House of Delegates, ra'ontul, imatalulbi ra kalulau.
Segida sel bill, mlam iwe taitol ringim, discussion, Senator Shoy.
I'll go for previous question, Mister Speaker. Mister President.
Shoy, mega comment. Segida motionu namdu ngese, ma. Clergam warolgol.
Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oy.
Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo.
Oy.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Oy.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oy.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
Oy.
Senator Mi Sangavau.
Oy.
Senator Kazuki El Tops Sungino.
Oy.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oy.
Senator Mason Ngire Abangal Whipps.
Oy.
Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
Oy.
Vice President Kry Mariur.
Oy.
President Hokons Paulis.
Oy.
Mister President, a shenkyo at wel bes, edi agano.
Shenkyo mor ti'al House Bill aigal Palau National Telecommunication Act of 2017 amla ngar ti'al blara Senate, at wel bes, edi agano. Floor leader.
President, segida mlabong el bill el nar a durud reading. Ra tam ek lutel. Al move ma da kobangal mor sel order a business r bill calendar gid over my first reading.
Segida motionu namdu ngese, ngutirge roguil gongel du oy. Om tok, namngai, floor leader.
Vice President, enganiya tabalol bill ngara first reading. Move ma da pasa first reading a Senate Bill 11-19.
Segida motionu namdu ngese, ma clergam iwe.
Senate Bill number 11-19. A bill for an act to enable and facilitate the use of arbitration as an alternative dispute resolution mechanism in international commercial disputes and for other related purposes. Ti'alu dasul molla, amo'ongei, mokosbe'ela blur belau, el mo'uspe at to'or arbitration, el momasaw, at to'or international dispute ma kukbe birangod al belgul. Ti'alu dasul molla, alutabdiya Presidenta Senate, Hokons Paulis, by request.
Shoy, mega comment. Senator Aldabel.
Mister President, dihsokal di'knu sesel to'ol gi'ral ti'al uldasul molla, angdaset ti'ang taramal to'terel uldasul molla. Kadama esabur belau, kadama el amosowise bra global community ra to'orasiobai, ma to'orakwankodaw, ma bekpingela business transaction sel itwin ar other belau, ma ar other investors, la'adangod al blue. Ma ti'alu dasul molla, amalimo smisi i sel resolution olbi lastel olbi agulal ne adapt sel New York Convention of Arbitration. Et aigal uldasul molla, awal ololisi, sel aigal mola aw ngalel ma iwasel sel sel aigal sel aigal Convention, blle the ratifyingi logio resolution. Ti'anga talgibal gamang te koran complicated omso del ndi akumrak ma sel bora kamiti e bolu suberni e bolse el meri port ra sel mal iwasel mal ibang moktegar ti'al uldasul molla en mo'blataqal mora anugul adam. Ak mal di otise aigal kukora uldasugal gi'ral ti'ang e olingita support ra rekla adam bolse be'el mo'support ti'al uldasugal to'terel gi'ral at to'orabusiness.
Senator Inabo.
Mister President, kan su langara ti'ala. Mister President, akulita kamiti el momeser talbill malbol unless antigi del koramla concern er nga, konsira last time el ngaringi ti'al bill. Sel concern er nga ki, Mister President, a sel tirge arbitrateurs amo'adal ngara outside ra blur belau, mosadstaim inda'odan tarir. Tangara New York, tangarger professionals sel lourior gi'ral ti'ang. Nosoka special, akulita el bonyas, sapel ngaringa special provision ngartella, lwasengir ngaringa ader belau, el mo'parta sel aigal mo'tertegi arbitrateurs. Al sugum at ti'al kontraktra asobaiya ngara, alsa blur belau. Ling, ako tulu ulitir gamring la ariral at high pay r professionals sel ngara outside ra blur belau. Mang, ndira kalulia cost of business el mo'omongar babra asela blur belau. Ak mal madenge aigal patokal benefits ringi, ndi komdasel lwasengir el mori sel special advantage el mora ader belau ma kumbali belau, alsum especially government ter bela rasum akadokongei el mo'oral wasaya kontrakter gi'damongara under te'gi ti'al arbitration agreement. Ma ndise aigal onti gi, Mister President, le concern er gi'da cost. Diregal concern er gi'da aradal ngara outside ra blur bela professionals, maybe tagawodan gi'da di'ham kadamo this advantage. Mas aigal concern er nga, ak mal di otin mo'kamiti olingita mal bulon meser ti'alu dasul molla, el bul consider sel aigal, Mister President, amal mesulang.
Suna, Maria, agu'da. Sugum ndi'ak etirge roguil gongel ti'alu dasul molla rako'tlo ngiwe'ldu oy. Om tok, namngai. Ti'assign el mora kamiti ra banking, insurance, and other financial matter. Senator Cecilil Aldabel, e olingita kamiti ra JGA le cherni aisan bol daklourior, el gutmaklilo'or adi. Ma dal sebe'le sel debora regular session ra April le blabol sebe'le motkuera, by April session. Floor leader.
President, kadama mal mulme, no mosel nextel a'el bill el ngara first reading, ma mukmog pasa first reading a Senate Bill 11-20.
Segida motionu namdu ngese, ma clergam iwe taitol.
Senate Bill number 11-20. A bill for an act to add a new chapter 4 to Title 27 of the Palau National Code establishing a fisheries development fund to amend 2 PNC subsection 121D to redirect half of the funding for the project development fund to the new fisheries development fund and for other related purposes. Ti'alu dasul molla, amo'osisavi, aveset chapter 4, a Title 27 ra Palau National Code, el moma'pe'ee a fisheries development fund, momolo ra 2 PNC subsection 121D, el mo'redirect ra half ra funding ra project development fund, el mora be'es r fisheries development fund, ma kukbe birangod al belgul. Ti'alu dasul molla, alul dersi, Senator Mi Sangavau, Senator Regis Agitaya, Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte, ma Senator Mason Ngire Abangal Whipps.
Segida taitol nam uy, auera. E po gun tira chairman ra Senator Sangavau bol skid omso del ti'al bill. Senator Sangavau.
Suna President, marang asuli'tirge el ko-introduce ser ti'al bill. Ti' Mister President, legislation amohel pradara omi edel mo'akses aigal udo del nyia dollar aigal deysel doltra el mora ra under sel vesel deyskim. Kadama mala tru'el basentrengil mora board el nyi mo'se el o'uspe el toru ta'prokurama ra'adar omi edel. Ti' Mister President, adiregal mo'se ete ma 50% ra aigal udo del nyia to'odra sel domodoni'il kwa sen project development fund ra undera prokurama ra forum fisheries agency. El diregal mo'motmo'kla aigal aigal ulior el mo'hel pradara omi edel lo'ol face aigal challenges ra to'ora'lu, ma diregal el mosabe ete ripera aigal fishing aggregation device el provide ti'al aigal funding el mo'hel pertir. Aigal aigal, Mister President, ti'anga mo'board el non-profit ma diregal sel mola grants, el diregal mo'hel pradara omi edel ra aigal aigal program ser ti'. Aigal aigal, Mister President, ta sega mosmodingi'el ti'al bill.
Shoy, mega comment. Sugum ndi'ak etirge roguil gongel ti'alu dasul molla rako'tlo ngiwe'ldu oy. Om tok, namngai. Ti'assign el mora kamiti ra tourism, let chairman ringi asangavu assign el mori. Floor leader.
Mister President, kadama mal mulme, mora second reading. Nadalo aigal a first reading, second reading, ndi'aga ngara bill calendar a second reading. Durud reading aigal blada disposer, aigal na durud reading ma da ho'anal mora resolution calendar. The take note aigal claim resolution el ngara referal calendar. Anya Senate Resolution 11-23, Senate Resolution 11-24, Senate Resolution 11-25, House Joint Resolution 11-4-1S, ma House Joint Resolution 11-5-1S. Aigal aigal claim resolution, Presidenta ngara calendar ma realtime make assignment tra appropriate el kamiti'gal mo'omesa aigal aigal resolutions.
Clergam iwe taitol aigal.
Senate Resolution number 11-23. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Ms. Jacqueline Alexander to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of Palau Public Utilities Corporation for a term of three years. Tell Senate Resolution number 11-23, amo'ongei ra presidential appointment tra Ms. Jacqueline Alexander el mo'odala Board of Directors ra Palau Public Utilities Corporation el kalsela e'wara.
Mal mulme.
Senate Resolution number 11-24. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mister Terrence Rulugd to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Social Security Administration for a term of four years. Tell Senate Resolution number 11-24, amo'ongei ra presidential appointment tra Mister Terrence Rulugd el mo'odala Board of Trustees ra Social Security Administration el kalsela e'wara. Senate Resolution number 11-25. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mrs. Satoru Davalu Adachi to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Social Security Administration for a term of four years. Tell Senate Resolution number 11-25, amo'ongei ra presidential appointment tra Mister Satoru Davalu Adachi to serve el mo'odala Board of Trustees ra Social Security Administration, el kalsel e'wara. el mo adal la Board of Trustees, our Social Security Administration, el kalsel Iewarak. House Joint Resolution number 11-4-1S HD1. A House Joint Resolution to request that His Excellency Surangal Wips Jr., President of the Republic of Palau designate an open season in June, July 2021 for the harvesting of trocus in the Republic of Palau and to request the Ministry of Natural Resources, Environment and Tourism to implement the existing facility feasibility study known as the Technical Report Number 20-16 entitled Recent Survey Results Indicate Trocus Niloticus Semum jointly done by the Bureau of Marine Resources and Palau International Coral Reef Center and to enter into negotiations with potential trocus buyers within forty-five days following the adoption of this resolution on the harvesting and marketing potential of trocus. Tyal House Joint Resolution number 11-4-1S HD1 a olengita ra His Excellency Surangal Wips Jr., President of Lurbelaw el mo designate ra open season ra omla isumum ra Lurbelaw, el mo olengita ra Ministry of Natural Resources, Environment and Tourism el mo implement ra ngani lom su bol Technical Report Number 20-16. El lombodong ar ngi, el recent survey results indicate trocus nikotigus semum. El ngi, alurular ngi, Bureau of Marine Resources, mapalau International Coral Reef Center el mo enter into negotiations sel lobantari ra potential buyers ra alselo forty-five days, ra will adoption at resolution. House Joint Resolution number 11-5-1S. A Senate Joint Resolution to authorize the Republic of Palau buying through the President of the Republic to borrow an amount not to exceed ten million United States dollars from the Asian Development Bank for the purpose of funding the operations and renewable energy acquisition efforts of the Palau Public Utilities Corporation. Tyal HR number 11-5-1S authorize Ra Lurbelaw through Rep. Ra Erbelaw el momaleng au do el dyakaleng alak ra ten million US dollars, Asian Development Bank el mocte garingi ya mo fund the operations and renewable energy request efforts ra Palau, Palau Public Utilities Corporations.
Ige kita igel resolution na namui, misel gotul resolution al girela appointment ra Jacqueline Alexander el mo adal la boardera Palau Public Utility Corporation ak assign ngil mora chairman ra utility, Senator Agitaya. Sel appointment ra Terence Rulugod el mo adal la boardera Social Security ak assign ngil mora Senator Inabo. Misel appointment ra Satoru Adachi, diregal mo adal la boardera Social Security mangdiregal mora Senator Inabo. Sel tokor omru semum ama tokor adav ma assign ngil mora chairman of Tourism ma marine marins, el Senator Sabao. Sel mo blengau do dra Asian Development Bank el mora Palau Public Utility ma direktal assign ngil mora Senator Agitaya. Asapel em kutmoklay gang maniksel sessioner gide dotteka actioner i flo leader.
President, kada malmal ma mora dyakangara adoption, kada mora introduction of bills na resolution. Sukumaniya bill ma resolution ra rekladel submiten ma klere. Eda bora Iron 15 Petition Memorial Communications madha note taigel several miselenes communication, ngarya miselenes communication 11-74. Tianga amnara ngiwal Women Association, Mergal President Paulis request ilgirela ah uspe la TV ma cameramen. Direkal denautra miselenes communication 11-75, tianga communication umnara kola bilum Gloria Salim, ebireklay Russia Lab, Mergal President Paulis, ilgirela reporter mas Asil Belaw, 27 Masil Belaw Conference direktal request additional budget el mora Masil Belaw Conference at tiyel meramel Masil Belaw. Ige kaldenautra miselenes communication 11-76. Et tianga amnara Ms. Sina Henry, Principal Ibo Bank Elementary School. El Mergal President request ah olbi rklulaw tokunis Senate ma House el mo o visit ra winstail March 17, 2021 ra etu klo el mo ngando bi. Tyal ame visit merolbi rklulaw. Direkal denautra miselenes communication ah 11-77, tianga amnara Mr. Santi Asanumal, Mergal President Paulis el girela 2020 Annual Report Ra Palau Red Cross Society. Direkal denautra miselenes communication 11-78, et tianga amnara taakal Senator Tavalwal, Mergal President Paulis request ra join, el mo join ra International Parliamentary Network for Education. Tianga korra kangestel girel sel miselenes communication ah 11-16 na iltilobera alastel session. Direkal denautra miselenes communication 11-79. Et tianga amnara babiel nara olbi ranga yaur Mergal Senator, Senator President Paulis el girela ah resolution number 20-07, tiyasil guk nara olbi ranga yaur meri. Eda boda note trangibode sa. Diregal denautra miselenes communication 11-80. Et tiya diregal nara olbi ranga yaur El Mergal Senate President, el girela guk resolution number 20-06, nara olbi ranga yaur. Diregal denautra miselenes communication 11-81, et tiara guk nara Ms. N. Singeo, el mora taakal Senator Inabol girela Senate Bill 11-18 ST2. Diregal denautra miselenes communication 11-82, tiya guk nara Ms. Carol Mauroy, Mauroy, el mora taakal Senator Inabol direktal girela Osishul Bill, Senate Bill 11-18 ST2. Diregal denautra miselenes communication 11-83, nara Mr. David Orruk, el mora Senator Inabol direktal masal Osishul Senate Bill 11-18 ST2. Direkal ngarya Osishul Communication, el guk nara Mr. Eliayop, el mora Senate Chairman Inabo, el girela Senate Bill 11-18. Direkal ngarya baby raka miselenes communication, Mr. President, el malmeso isubah ah mlera orriro al print at tiyel al senard gida ma olengita ekmu mel seedel pace ayegal baby raka communication at tiyegidil partra calendar.
Si da motion namdu ne seken, et tigil rogu ilgongir du oi. Om tok namangai flo leader.
Nataran, Vice President, direktal denautra miselenes communication 11-85. Et tianga ngadirekal merigidil nara, mabo omusu besti, tiang nara taakal Chairman Retis Agitaya. El mora ngira, ngiraitmetu la belel. El Chairman Aborda PPUC ilgirela a meeting, el naringi ma yegel gukwal ngitra report el kamiti ra energya olengita PPUC mo promo provide. Direkal denautra miselenes communication 11-86. Et tiang nara Mr. Kevin Paloi, Principal, Principal, Principal Kejcp Consulting. El meri taakal Senator Umi Sabao. El girela, konsenel girela fiscal year 2021 budget bill. Ah, specialist sel guk budget ra EQPB, direktal bodessa sel klotutrel concern. Direkal denautra miselenes communication 11-87. Tianga amnara Ms. Charlene Mersey. El meras taakal Senator Inabo, Chairman Weiss and Minz. El direktal expressa konsenel girel sel ah budget bill, eh more specifically sel budget ra EQPB. Direkal bodessa sel konsoner ngi, eda direktal denautra miselenes communication 11-88. Et tianga direktal tiang nara Ms. Tolmi Amlik. El mora taakal Chair Weiss and Minz, El Inabo. El direktal konsenel girela sel EQPB budget. Direkal denautra miselenes communication 11-89. Et tianga amnara El Seitalay, el mora taakal Chair Inabo. Guk masal al girela Osishul Koncerna tokora EQPB ma budget trangil ngani ayegel korra amklotutrel koncernen bodo take note trangi. Direkal Osishul Koncernen, dinguk nara Vik- Victor Nestor, et tiama kame miselenes communication 11-90. El meri Chair Inabo, el girela Osishul Koncerna ah EQPB budget. Ma yegide, Mr. President, taigel wal additional miselenes communication mllel omesindri ngia maldi kangestel expressa konsenel girel sel budget ra EQPB. Ma di da take note, our senators segidil merala conference sel budget, mademo, omesera outkamnik, maseng mo grata address ayegal konsenera. Eda olmol me, Mr. President, el mora Iron 16, miselenes business ma bestiati ala me, Senator, sunganiya miselenes business eti.
Bauera dgoni flo leader, medigul ngite sel mrengasuleme Senator Tavulwar sel babil ngemel merangak, ilgirel sel assignment trigor gau. Agul ngite, malmal, malomisir ngil waseng ngarya tutrel bodo join ngi indiak, yag uspera recommendation gau, malsum kadamosowis brngi, ebododan ngi waseng kadamgrang, mo joinirtire nga ra lem eset chairman of Education.
Monsor President, ta tinga tiyam, nle waseng tiyamal klotutrela bodu sispral sel. Kangestel sel lotutrel sel Number Four STG, UN STG, sel quality education. Di krissebo krisseel recommendation, ma yegel trantengil oti lo seangarawul mungina bodu sispral sel. Endi tianga taitan, dimo mudra tigil tira omte ayegal lolbi raga karusibra blu la dal motma, ke kada kainse mli si ayegel tokora school. Waseng mgrado ra la udo dal mom, lolmssisi, emgrado ka uklre, merogul kangestela schoolerangal gede. Albo krisseel recommendation el korra, madam, bodo trangi, sulang.
Monsulang eh Chairman Tavulwar. Ayegel tokora tigil erbe environmentaliste Senator Inabo, mtake note trirtire klotutrel ayegel babil ngil mergau, eset chairman of Weiss and Minz, flo leader. Om miselenios, kada nga ra miselenios, Senator Agitaya.
So tell them, Mr. President. Miselenios, ngira segidul otusira babil ngi galnora ah aboard of PPUC, sel miselenes communication 11-85. Kadamosad al girel sel entila PPUC ilmomelenga ten million dollars loan ra eh debil mo fundam klo lubere ra tokora capital improvements el tira require in order to efficiently produce a den gil merigida ader belaw. Um, li mlangi segidil hearing ra ventri ra March 12, mneto gatogol masal. Bela babil ngi galnortira olengita baby ra supporting documents ilgirela ayegel mo klo portioner sel loan. Ma ra imor ngi a two point five million dollars, ngiamo ol olengita ngil momara control system, beesel control system, mora at ayegel sel dingiburongamla. Two point five million dollars. Esi take claim, kmasi etospe ngi el mo redusera klo ngel a temela power outage sel mada den gil tuspe ngi lo re edel, mutul restore a den gil mora blue. Direkal mnenautra baby ra records, mnen mildongra ayegel hearinga amnargi atogol mnetobodok kmasi tiyel two point five million dollars, lal tiyel parts a gukmani la lal tiyel entar masil. Wa ulma babier amlongol, olengita trirtirik kmasi gamlutul mo wils modi tiyel ontmiv, eh loyaga babier, ilgirenganiya report kmasing ayegal logo dal la den ging, tira egida girel lospe tira al two point five million dollars, swadatirtirik kmasing mralu spala two point five million dollars baby ra ado omdasuk kmasi indiak. Direkal taraklon ventri ra ah ua, a three million dollars, el u lal escro la mo secure a payment, el mosel solar project at tira al bangar ngi. Ak agri ra sel in principle, Mr. President, dim diha babil ngil sel contractal do ban. Madodongita trirtirik kmasi me, kapil sel contractal blam executor ngi require gumil mo, ngutal three million dollars, lal escro omte a payment ser gumil. Diha amal isur nga rasi, Mr. President, andi wa el altaim, en amatera aklo ngela den gibul do ban, el mora lo dal lospe ngi. Ma yegida baby ra isul, kamiti rga wasal mo wils lti ritel ouera da da endor ser tiyel resolution, el momla entar ten million dollars loan. El agada ultui ra klo loan, lseki secure a budget ra gabelment. Ma yegida nga ra lela Senate ilgirel mal mo wils madengil ya sel, ouera bodu endor ser tiyang. Di kado mesera obrer adra hause tamre edel auror, motamla agongir tiyel resolution na pasringil may, ma auror ol u dal kamiti rga auror ngi, ldi modi pendra. Ar adele segidil henzi ra PPUC lo olta ayegel supporting documents, di segidak, Monsulang.
Sulang eh Senator Agitaya, Senator Isan.
Mr. President, tangaria amnlesual mosel girela ppi cima kamiti ra iputra, madad my schedule couldn't fit, anding mal gari member ra, awa lel tiyel loan ra last o ige. Ti angul mu ra ten million, mosal to where the end. Kadamle konsen ra PPUC ilmomelenga la udo for two reasons. One, for operations subsidy. Two, mgerakli tiyel lourior ra alternative energy, IE solar project. Segida korra bil tabangar ra, awa lel tiyel louriora ten, ten million dollars loan ra lastel olbi. Mang, with that in mind, kidadi kabneka infirmat terul besen member ra a PPUC board. I heard that one of them resigned couple of days ago. Mang lamade la three or two, and then there's an appointment ngal madata in alchilts. Korra peligibl begi karar ngok adil tu abesel board, eda albanla ayegal albanlela PPUC. IE solar system project. El dal odangela singirela geltan, ewara pretelel, in how much money is going to be involved in debt or otherwise? Onge room, tiyel ten million dollar. Onge day, tiyel esakela aral den ghi, maral. We have all these things going yet, never last him fix all at one time. And other aboard, a majority tira la mo besen in the next couple. And other board, a majority will be in the next couple of weeks. Do we have confidence? Of course, we voted for them. They need time to, let's say, to get energy. They have the concept, and they have the energy since two years ago. They have the money, and they have the transition, and again, check our record. We were supposed to take this 2 million dollar loan for two purposes. We have the formula, the percentage of operation, the percentage of renewable energy. We have the renewable energy. We have the money. We have the money. We have the PUC. We have the project, solar project. Can you imagine all these things going on at the same time with a new board, with a new administration? We have the push, push, push. We have the list, and maybe we should take a step back and prioritize our SNOEK. Privatize our district as to what is to take in first, second, third, and fourth. We have the board, and we have the running. It's going to take time. We have the support, and we have the authority. We have the BSRA, which was sports. No matter how good you are, from all-star on one team to another, it takes a while to get used to play with your new team. Mr. President.
Mr. President. Senator Tabalwal.
Mr. President, we have the information, and we have the money. We have the majority, and we have the school, and we have the public school. We have the 30,000 students, and we have the school, the science fair, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school, and we have the school. The principals, and we have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. The school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. In 1981, the school, we have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. September 25, 1981, we have the school. We have the principal, Elin Aravulu, and we have the senior. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the issue. We have the issue, and we have the issue. We have the issue, and we have the issue. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the school, and we have the school.
Mr. President. Senator Tabalwal. We have the information, and we will discuss it. We have the school, and we have the school. We have the chairman, Tabalwal, who will discuss it. Senator Sungino.
Mr. President, I have the information, and I have the information. I have the youth, and I have the school. We have the issue, and we have the issue. We have the youth, the holiday. We have the program, and we have the different states. We have the issue, and we have the issue. We have the community, culture, youth, and sports affairs. We have the Salvador del Lambs, and we have the programs. We have the program, and we have the program. We have the program, and we have the program. I have the state youth organizations, I have the league, and I have the law, and I have the law. We have the information, and we have the information. We have the activities, the physical activities, the sports, faith-based programs. We have the programs, and we have the programs. We have the earth, and we have the earth. We have the culture performance. We have the other, and we have the other. With the support, we have leaders, our state legislatures, our business sector, our other leaders. Especially other leaders, who help us. We have the successful youth day, holiday. We have the programs, and we have the programs. Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, I have the information. Mr. President, I have the information. The president, I have the conference, and I have the information. Mr. President, we have the request of Senator Cuarte. He said, "Health immunity," and he said, "COVID safe." We have the information, and we have the information. We have the information, and we have the information. The president, he said, "The school mail," "March 21," "the weekend," "We have the clarifier," "We have the picture," "Mr. President."
Mr. President, I have the information. I have the meeting, and I have the meeting. We have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. Senator Isal.
I have the question, and I have the question. I have the question, and I think the president himself is the only one who can answer that question. We have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. Let the president take the bull by the horn and solve the issue. We have the decision, the president, after all the blow. The school, he made the decision. We have the time, if we cannot do it at OIG, boys are concerned, and we have the question. And then maybe we have failed a little bit. I have the question. Because I have the concern, and I have the question, and I have the question. 17, 21, March. The president should take the bull by the horn at this time, with the issue. Mr. President.
Senator Isal, I have the position, and I have the great concern. We have the school, and we have the understanding. We have the school, and we have the school. Hopefully, we have the information, and we have the information. Leader.
Mr. President. The National Communications, I have the information. I have the information, and we have the PUC, the PUCG, we have the PUCG, we have the IQPB. I have the House of Delegates, and we have the explanation, and we have the information, the budget, the IQPB. We have the trigger, and we have the concern, and we have the action, the budget. Mr. President, we have the point out, the Concerned, we have the sentiment. We have the expression, and we have the expression. We have the responsible leadership, the government, the administration. We have the action, and we have the policy direction, and we have the administration. We have the reason behind the reduction of the budget. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the budget, just to send the message, or intention, or action. We have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the constitution, and we have the constitution. We have the direction, and we have the reason. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. Mr. President, we have the press communication, 1126. We have the executive order, Executive Order 444, Organization Minister of Justice. When the executive order, Mr. President, was given, the ministry of Justice, the president, the Office of Professional Standards. We have the appropriate, we have the question, the ministry of Justice, the ministry of Justice. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the professional standard, and we have the executive order. We have the executive order, the Attorney General. We have the absence, and the Ministry of Justice, and Attorney General will assume the role of Minister. We have the question, Mr. President. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the Attorney General, and we have the Attorney General. We have the administration, and we have the administration. We have the oversight, and we have the police, and we have the prosecution. We have the ministry, and we have the ministry. We have the Ministry of Justice, especially the police. We have the prosecution, and we have the investigation. We have the direct investigation. We have the appearance, and we have the possibility, and we have the credibility, and we have the police. And the due process, we have the question. We have the point out, Mr. President, when the president said, "Possibility." We have the question, and we have the question. We have the internal understanding, and we have the possibility, the conflict, the authority. We have the executive order 445, establishing the National Security Coordinator. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. We have the question, and we have the question. National security, as we all know, the executive branch makes sure the security, the blue. The coordinator, the authority, and we have the question.
ak ti igora malak tekmasei. La agiril mutl mo lalaq le mongil streamline ra igel roller national security coordinator al mo make sure nndiakal bol nganiya igel wal overlap per nyima igel bebir agency. El nyi or eding meru ra osi si lurio. Ak klotutlele, Mr. President, el boda mindful giril akkmasei. Igal tuora national security, nganiya igel duduleseng kora classify del information, nndiakal giril ngidil adha momdengay. Ngani tirgel certain, el adha lo agumraq la aurior el mengatmoq la e make sure et uphold ra igide l confidentiality ma secrecy ra igide l ngaraala, nndiakal bol ule bol nganiya igide l guk isur gide ma dronglela bebir la adha mal even bebir ablul il gida atmagal laurior. Makdiso kalpoint out, finally president, ngani se il Bureau of Public Safety. Agameseng indirekal manamo wal beto ka igel division ngani. Sokal take note sel Division of Criminal Investigation, sel Division of Transnational Crime. I know nmaseng nganiya klakarousa ngi. Nding sabiel direkal create conflict ra aurior ma authority, tirgal adha monnga ra igal obis. Ndirekal tar dasal direkal gundaseng klotutlela bol president ma adala Minister of Justice bol dangokla. El mutl malmo ngil ala na igel specific responsibility ma ngaraan. Nga tmlames ra igal namomregal government ma namomregal raal bo nganiya conflict ra mndi lsel imol obisim na tmlamok conflict ra authority tirik nmaseng igel gida soal make sure ntel esel organization ra Minister of Justice, diakal create mal even lolomol may gide l wal bol possible conflict ra el ministry. Mamsulangi be, Mr. President.
Sulangi Senator Aldebail, Senator Quarte. Sulangi president, mal will awaseng ilikor koma will senators. Direkal soaldi follow over sel concern mal blakatak la watamela la ablur belaw. El wase cabinet ra president, amohedha giro will executive department, cabinet members, appointer tir president and memlar advice and consent. Tia nga, of course, Article 8, Section 5. Tulisegide president, ndiakan galad sel role, sel separation of power. Ndiakan sayakot gundaseng critical ol mengani se gide l appoint and memlar akangir olbi ra ulaw. Ma gundaswe se maludswal egiril mo mesengi in more practical terms. Ledeb ereng maigel bebir akora siwang regid il change a government, our ministers will remain. But our government it transform another government, the year dim erem and dywisi. Ma gundaswe president, esabesel government, ngiril madongokla wase ala akant sent sel lamaltel olbi ra ulaw, lo mi er ngel appointi represente. Sen se bedel di dangokla tian egongel wase ndiungila adil mede dywisi. Ak gundaswe ndiak nganiya teletelele bol masamokla, le gundaswe ndiakan lungil el president mal even teletae, el dol mor nganiya la mor mada. Sulangatiale, president. Sulangi Senator Quarte, Senator Isal.
Mr. President, a chairman na kame tikora JGA, mtila sel akora mal meliu trablula kame tikirao. Nga mdo ya telele, el momba information girila. Ma nawal talsandey, tia executive order a presidenta deyret martsteng. Ma mnamo muwi wurngil diak adha la, ma mnamo mutl mo sigra adha la ora mskaka audasu. Ma koli soal share with you, not give back, but share with you what I found, what I read. Ma rot sel executive order a presidenta mal blakatakl sel longerul, ngadel we ras mal longerung. Sel gotak pulo wase. Whereas pursuant to Article 6 of the Constitution, the national government must take positive action to protect the safety and security of persons and property. Longerul bar asergi, akkmasei, at Title 2 of the National Code establishes eight ministries, including Ministry of Justice, which is established by Section 1. This is longeday. Whereas, as a national chief executive, him, president, the president is empowered pursuant to Section 109 of Title 2 of the Palaun National Code to provide for the subdivision of the ministry and to prescribe their duties and responsibilities and functions. Si sel mlak create among asa bureaus, a more divided ngarala a FIC. Now, sel overa page 2. Emegongela page 1, en malmo madas igel FIC, maurela ministera stay official attorney general. Nga kame ngiura executive order number 444. Eh? Minister of Justice. Ndi mukmulwasi, il teleappointment dringira AG il mo. Mukmulwasi, tirak mal kaching tooi. Nndiakal it change la constitution, ndiakal override dringi, mal even ndiakal tamli. Ma ndiakal es last la amend dringi. He simply say, and I quote, "When the Minister of Justice is unavailable or when there is no Minister of Justice", which there is, there isn't, "the Attorney General shall coordinate activity of the ministry and shall be responsible for the performance of duties of all offices, bureaus and divisions of the ministry." That sentence, a mskaka audasu, waset tia nga temporary in nature. This is not permanent. Le klima berat temela episo, il dimnaga ministerak, mnganaklele eru rak. Eh? Ar ndi. Senator itamadengel mlorgi. Nga nganiya na ministrana, itfori ngi, edimnag mnganiya mmlorgi. So, nga ka omrang, waset tia temporary in nature. El iris yaldadha al, ra ger no ra AG. Ra press conference ngi, logyeri, wasi kau kumera, mala ba ikal turio. Ya AG reply nmaseng nga nga ra contract for years. Bakteo lo lutu ra contracta. Now, we do not know when her contract will extend or finish. Ndi nga ka omrang wase, "If I agree that sentence, I just read you but tell executive order, ngan, I will replace anybody." He basically says, "A lack adha available, malak a minister, ya kung kalmon." Ma gundas, it's more like administrative review of performance, adha marara lurio, ma assignment mara. Ndi lbo ya contract, mutroto presidenta la amosain, se hidakdisi loba egan, loba ministers. Elekdisi il saen. Ma gundaswe, lakchamp ngan. Let's talk to president, waseng ra intentri. Ledak tia do politics, igal vi ottau tangao. Let's walk to his office, wase, explain to us more what your intention. Ige gide a gentleman move. Nga ka direkal diak adha la, ni nga diak adha la, mla kurnak, president is wrong. Ma kasi nmla oi wiya diakal sabiel replace ra AG, replace ra Ministry of Justice, Minister of Justice loba AG. Ma kasi akora mlamui waset tooi diakal replace ngi. Ma akora chairman a JGA, ngora soal ma kuiga mdam bodo ra agam bokuurur ngi. Ba ilidir si tial bla ya ma kora mla mlabal na mskaka bebir a fact president, ba bebir la adha ngare akant sentir. Nga ngare akant sentir, gimi bo obis a president, tembo ngi mo do ngi. Ilaka di da fifty steps on the officer ngi la dbo. Sulang.
Yarmalmshaule, Senator Isal. Ma askarao, ma mo look into it and make sure, wase, atto lurur ngi a president am proper reng a Minister Attorney General amomla igel role ra Minister of Justice, role. Igel lurrela Minister of Justice, Attorney General amo take a responsibility ngi. Ya a Minister of Justice al amal blakatakl la igel guk ngar alel. Yes, a president ngari authority ngi. Adi question o she. Ah, Attorney General, among may gil role ra Minister of Justice. Se ya question e egiril sumaklimo blakatakl le, tabtok la adra blua amlagel wase tia ndiakal aluit. Edi nga mal, nobody give us a true answer. We have to ask for somebody. Nsabedel mla opinion ra adha la. Edi ekautal chairman, maloniterka, bom look into it. Edesa wase ya action ra president am proper. Yes, ngari a FIC organized government, nding ngariya luul la government, tad organized waseng magarang. Senator Quarte. President, msumlanga nakmuti ngi. Senator Sangbao.
President, msumsulatiale, president tia gundaseng ndiakal dil tirgal, gundaseng adatog ra giril nlo omesa tial issue. Nga kama tirgal tar mno omesengi. Mr. President, tlen ngariya igel roller a ministers. Bigosin tial confirmation, or tial olbi, unable rgaol momurule igel gide lurio. Mngaulma gada talgib mno kora omesengi, waseng ngariya igel mol mutra omdim san arwa recognition, ngari se il signature a minister, il giril ngari. Mng limited a roller ga, altsugum gadi appointi. Le altsugum gadi appointi, gadi meru se gide l guk ti lurio, ndi rogul toka giril a president tlen tirgasaen. Se gida ulma tial asainera chairman a JCA momsa nga appropriate president, mo godo dangaliko, waseng malmormal wase, ndiakal altsugum tial lurio ra wasegid. Engo, wase el mo uspe ersegide lurio, tiamla hapen ablua amregel president Trump pamlu uspe erngil avoid a confirmation na senate e appoint ra adha ngariya atlugal temel. Mr. President, ma tia tia dimle yotel sesion rigid ma yakmlebrin abre ngi, ngariya legislation a president el boda, boda proposal ngi, el momblakatakl ra igel gide l toko kumera a president. Giril momblakatakl. Including, wase sel bol presidenta el matutka, mprisent sel sils. Engiril ngariya time, sel appoint ra acting el diakal ngalak ra ninety days. Lo uspe erngi, ngagiril nlasenda ra ngaklmera Congress. Igel gide presidenta bebir atko ngal sel constitutional, gumanak wasi giril rolabala el momblakatakl. Guman sularatiale.
Sulangi, Senator Mario.
Msumla president, nga kadi akadha la, makti gora direkal dimo, mral gora konson, direkal buto ra adha mergor gide l gide l tegide l. Teletae, nngsel se gide l klakarousa, el asel sumdaa ngar minister. Ya presidenta giril gagev ya nganalela igel oversi igel gide obis. Sumdaa ngar minister. Mngak gundasul wase, el sum ngarseng giril omte ra president, anbehebra president, towal imala president ngarseng. Nndiakal imala minister, ndiakal minister. Ma egedi tung, nding gundasul wase, nmla asainer tial urul mara JGA, bina amo mes aygide l roguil. Direkal sel question, il direkal bilbresi ria kuartel wase, mngammo mmorek cabinet member, altsugumak cabinet member, engiril memlara confirmation na senate. Gundas we gide l ngay rogu, do daktagi il direkal bodomis tial issue president, nding nga ka ba il direkal guk kora konson, nga ka nga ra tuora security. Le lang e ngari se gide l tegide l pesel blak create ngi. Ma direkal sel transnational crime. Ma direkal igel tial Bureau of Customs and Border Control. Se men direkal ngari, egad mla momsal waseng ngariya conflict ra atirka igel ngara border, direkal tirka igel guk adha nar. Ma adha customs. El adha customs, a umletu ma border, atil ngara atko ra customs, igal wa otur klal, ma ngarani miso isubra border. Ndi guk toko ra buadraq, sauk ngariya adha ngari. Makdiril gora, mral waseng ngari giril issue, il direkal gida munda suringil, wasegalil se bedel moruliya border control, guk mo campaign ra igel gide l la adha ngariya congesteritil mora igel gide l metmora border. El mosab il motmaga, mng la ngariya igel gide l mno issue, mno walgora mno adha customs, mno investigator igel toko adraq, sen diwili guk kloora adha anargim mno diakal orura igel investigation ra adha customs. Makteo mral waseng, since msaad tia il toko ra security ma border control, engiril amo mes aygide do daktak. Edri limol borsab el mral ngariya bol dakal orura, mral ngariya training el tien tir ra igel rogul tir amo mes ra border. Msel lagatmoq, lela ka igel gora mo question, asendia ka igel lurur tir gede gime, akseptai gue. Gundas se gide l agiril ta direkal domesengi, tegide l kua organized tial tuora security, direkal borsab edel mes aygide do daktak len. La ngariya nga ra finance, nga ra mga ra Minister of Justice. Sulang, president.
Senator Isal.
Bo, gusel asaiment ra gao, olmo mes tial toyo ra appointment ra AG mo la ministry. Makteo ngitra, bessingal galo, wase akotel bokuurur ngi, amo ogoro a presidenta, amo mitri ngi impression. Esat chairman na kame tikirao. Emoge erngil, wase gamlutl, mta takti tial mo clear mam. Yolmitri, wasi gao, nganiya omre edel la appointment a Minister of Justice. Egi l ngal toko ya, abok ngal mesera, sen seni. Gundaswe se appropriate. Diakal soal milusaba beher ma ngarang. Meet him, ask him what he thinks, ask him what I just report to you by reading of his maybe I'm wrong, and then he can advise me, akma tolme ma position ngi, waset tia nga temporary, permanent, how long, how soon you gonna appoint him. Aldi lungi ra, emgangei, mbokuro wasi.
Boom.
Okay. Tia ansedan, ansedan misenisal nga kanga ngari il di gadep. I hope you find time, gora mni ra adha house, wasegida pa jet conference. Oh, okay, anyway. Ak muwirani, wase mal oenga ra this president for it. Lurrela, lomregal olbi, la bank of Guam la bank Pacifica hold outudir adha belaw, ma ndiakal adha belaw, lo giwa igel EIP. Igbe amadengay tial bla ma house amdotmar, passa resolution, adapt resolution, lngita egal bank ma madre de tir Guam, wase po lutau diadha bela, edimla. La president msaali, wase akmal unil baviye, beredel sel baviye, nora bank of Guam. Edi ya, tefala geys, melangar geys. Sen sunto ribion aloer tirigide fifty cent. Ya akmal oenga ngal president, imla mek ra bol move lotoba da twenty plus million dollars, with la government tial belaw, la bank of Guam. Just to be, he follow up the tobitra PIF. Igel gumeseng FIC la amcisi protection ra blu lo giwa ta itori ngi. Ndi tia gida konson ngak, akmal supportra percent, hundred percent. Tirak konson ngak, akmal digeme a confirm, confirm r terul best old member FIC. nga ka omrang wase, "When you do that to a bank, that amount of money, ndiawest integral million, saraba bank of Guam tial blu. FIC should be alarmed Financial Institutions Commission, rimutl momesasel bank mo make sure insolvent, nndiakal tiride l action auul el bo ngiya dry run la bank. Dry run sel people sel start, la bank mmo laududir. Ma gora miltoi merid do timoregal financial institution, wase ma ba gime gora. Push around, push over, whatever. Ndi girila FIC, my hope they hear my statement. Girila FIC, ilala lo meeting e mo omesaset tia nga impacting ngi. Ebo satra adha belaw, mmo laududir sel bank, it could be a problem. I know bank of Guam is strong. The FIC komla sel hold egal, wo do, nndiakam art, where are you now, plan pull out of government tial bela. Adi tia nga should be in their bell, and they should be in emergency meeting trying to find out what the next step would be as an institution. Il protector be pastor si ablur bela. Sulang, Mr. President.
Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, adiso kal edel mursel assignment tra Senator Isal, ya akmal mrengasulel al mo look into that. Gundas etel issue abil racer ngi ya Senator Sangbao, sera tira mal dableda start. Mr. President, gamnila se itsel olbi la sovereign tia huk pesel olbi la, il al government. Masel advice and consent ra senate, ta se giril advice and consent ra senate, ra il al olbi ra kalulaw. Ma akmalari wase, Senator Isal, direkal bolisang sel Attorney General, al diakal talu, tal memlara advice and consent ra senate. Ak madengal waseng gora practice that has been going on, nding gundaseng giril el mo make sure, akdo tirak la la. Edi nga madengal waseng ngari appointi ra president, and serve at the will of that president. Masungguk nlaten sa president, and gansel di continue. Ndiak kora di malgora Attorney General, akmal gora igel roguil official appointment tal ngiya existing ma especially cabinet ra president ma. Andi sokal edel se gide l ma assignment tra Senator Isal, mrengasulel, sulang.
Marion Odo, Senator Aldebail.
President, gudmrengasulela Chairman Isal kaba egongel mo omesa look into this, gundaseng klotutlele eh, nmdirekal tiklotule eda nga ka, basically, amlega konson nga ka, tial executive order awal blakatakl ngatik, nmaseng in the absence ra Minister of Justice, Attorney General, gia sumaron. Wa igel di luba is presidenta ala akkmasei sel sumanib, ndiakal minister and presidenta assume sel role na minister. Ma altsugum gudungul oliar executive order, wal blal presidenta wal technically, mna pasangil mora Attorney General. Et tia nga eslong ngara executive order esel sabiel a president, ndiakal, ndiakal nek mutian intention ngiya, nmaseng bungun sa drorera executive order. Ndi tia technically, el ang sabiel a president, ndiakal appoint ra mo Minister of Justice. Ya Attorney General, malmormal sumur tial ngaraal, tia nga obradal ngaraal. Ba igedi lura earlier. A Ministry of Justice, akut lobra da aurere. Ma dongo at, bado makngara Attorney General mo assume sel role na Ministry of Justice, she also at the same time oversee the prosecution function. Et tia malmo imis lobra dal ngaraal, Mr. President, ma ngil la diregal Chairman Isal bol lo look into this, sel inkora president, nmaseng tia nga tia gide mleso mal bol wasegide, al even mle ngoda intenter ngiya nguloliar tial executive order, lgo mesengi, you know, it's 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 just gonna create a lot of burden el mora AG, osi si tamen mo beto ka igel wa questionable ra function tial ministry.
Senator Isal.
Direkal gundasel klotutlele, dugaal svelas, wasi kau how long ndiakal Minister of Education. How long ndiakal Ministera ngarang. How long ndiakal Ministera ngarang. Nga ram guk ti AG eguk tia di Ministry of Justice, a global guliya education, mahel. Ma ika, ika on ilam sam, ndiakal di specific lila para Ministry of Justice. If we do not agree with president, tial mo ngi, then we do not agree with him the holding on moralical position in the ministry, hello rule nyima directors, without appointing them. Badeng issue asek, how soon will you plan to appoint a other member of senate, memlara firm. Le ukta sing, Ministry of Justice, eguk gide wektul ias issue, mahel, ngedemoga ample. Eguk gide wektule, imol mora, atara ministry ra, na maddigamade. Ngedemoga ample. So I think, gudomes tial erangalel. Ministry of Justice is important for the safety, protector, property, adha belaw. My god, a Minister of Health important for our lives, mahel tegide. Ndi she shio behits ngi, ndiakal wase ere, ere held bill wasi, Ministry of Justice lal wasi. No, that's unfair, that's not, that we're not being serious. We're picking what we want. Sulang.
Shertesis. Dul madongia sesion rigid el mora order. Klot leader.
President, gudnam omregala, miselanish business, madmosel next item announcement. Ngariya announcement tra Senator.
Senator Sangbao.
Sulang, president, announcement, nga ka kame tirgara terrorism environment and maritime, ma ngariya public hearing, ngi mora igel Senate Bill 1112, ma Senate Bill 1114 ra ten okla ra klura amayo.
Sulang, president. Senator Inavo.
President, kame tirgara ways and means, ngariya a meeting ngariya lobangela Minister of Finance, sel Tax Task Force ma Director of Tax, egiril sel Senate Bill 1115, sel Tax Reform Act. Ma ngariya bavir la black cross, senators borsab edel omes, ya klugu gedanga clarification ra a kame team, borsab ela borsab edel disaidal waseng ngarang, aboto bangal betla. Ah, join, a house amo obangeda, ma disteldiwa na clarification. Sulangi, Mr. President.
Klot leader.
President, ilige l announcement, gudmrengala lobong altamek move, mada atseron tial bla, il sapsekugol of the chair.
Sena motion, namdu ngi seg, nmtirgel roguil egongel du oi.
Oi.
Omto.